I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, it is 5:31 and I'm going to call this board study session to order. Role call. Trustee Helen. Trustee Trent. Trustee Kim.
Here.
Trustee Proctor.
Here.
And I'm also here. Public statements related to agenda items, please limit them to three minutes. This evening, we are going to be speaking about equity focused achievement and we're going to turn this meeting over to Mr. Schumler.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening. It's good to see you all. I am joined this evening by our Ed Services leadership, Executive Director Aleida Baratar Cruz, Executive Director Kenyetta Cook, and Executive Director Pam Barfield, David Chambliss, Assistant Super Ed Services. We're excited to spend some time with you this evening talking about or studying and focusing in on student achievement and particularly with a lens around the equity data. So we appreciate the opportunity to to talk with you this evening. We're going to go through several slides of data as well as talk about how this is connected to our strategic plan work. And then, of course, at any point, please stop us. We're happy to engage in discussion about any particular pieces of data as we go through. So in the strategic plan, we're in year four at this point. And one of the key things to kind of frame our discussion tonight is the fact that that strategic plan has been very much focused on the the ways in which we're trying to transform instructional practice. This is, we've spent a lot of time talking with you about the teacher training and coaching work that we've done. We're going to talk a little bit more about that tonight. Also, the ways in which we are introducing new innovative curriculum, whether it's the PATH curriculum at the foundational literacy work or some of our new middle school curriculum. But the context for looking at this achievement data, we hope can be about this emphasis we've had in our strategic plan on instructional practice. So in that vein, what, just to kind of bring us into the, you know, sort of the context of the work that we're doing, particularly in foundational literacy, in mathematics and in preschool, because we want to include that as a context for the work that we're doing. We have a series of videos, so sit back, we're going to play those three videos and give you an opportunity to kind of refresh your understanding of the work that we're doing.
No?
Oh, it's not working.
It was working.
It was. It was totally working earlier.
I want to hit my volume. Let me just escape for one minute. And see what happened here.
It's literally just because it's recording, like it was literally.
Or maybe because we moved the screen closer.
I'm kind of trying to present.
Like if Joe comes closer, it'll stop working.
Yeah.
I'm going to go to this one, just see if this one's working. I want to use it with my volume, but then I worry it's going to.
Echo.
Echo.
I'll try it.
When I think about the last three years of the strategic plan, I just see so much movement and so much systems that have been put in place to really accelerate student learning and really put students at the head of everything that we're doing. So in the K two, about three years ago, we had teachers who started thinking about, is there something different that we can do? Because what we were doing at the time wasn't reaching all students.
My name is Nicole Habib Ling and I am a language and literacy TOSA at Bear'sford Elementary School. When we were in the classroom four plus years ago, we were looking at something called the three queuing system, which I personally did all of the time. And it's, you know, like, look at the word, look at the picture. Use the picture to figure out what the word is. And we would have the students sort of learn to read by guessing. And in those moments, a lot of our gut felt like something's not right here. But we sort of kept going. And then when this structured literacy came to us in the form of PATH as one of the components, a lot of what our gut was feeling was kind of confirmed, like, oh, that was off. And oh, this is how it should be instead.
My name is Zoya Solome and I'm a first grade teacher at Bear'sford Elementary School. I think so much has changed in the way I teach reading. We know the research now. We know it's science driven. It's much more multi-sensory. The students can use their bodies. I teach young kids. They need to use their bodies. They need to be fully engaged. The more I know as a teacher and the more support that I've received from our TOSA and from our school district trainings, the more my students grow and it's joyous to see.
It's really been this collaborative sort of circle approach, which has been really nice. Where district leaders, teachers, teachers on special assignment have really kind of collaborated and humbles ourselves where there aren't really these levels anymore. It's like, hey, here's our students at the center and we're all going to sit together to help, to support our students.
In the last three years, students increasing every year based on our district benchmarks, their ability to show us that they are learning the foundational skills in K two. So they become fluent readers in third grade and beyond. We know that if students leave second grade without these skills or without a strong grasp of these skills, they'll keep struggling and it's really hard to catch up. And we have seen that our students are actually performing better in March than they did in May last year. And that's all students, kinder, first and second, and our student groups like multilingual learners, students that have an economic need, students with disabilities, every student group and every grade level is at least where they were in March or higher.
They're excited and that's a huge part, right? Joy is a huge part of success. And when there's joy, there is also a feeling of confidence within that. And learning is hard. Reading is hard. And we've named that for our students so that they don't feel that this should be an easy thing. And if it's not, I'm out of here. Their confidence has grown and we can see that because they're able to move through these levels of books and they know that they're moving. So like they're, you know, there's all these different titles. And so they'll say like, oh, we can't wait to get to Camp Hilltop. Or, oh my gosh, we're in Stand By Me. The program that we use has become this visual model for them to, to, to watch how they can grow. Whereas we didn't really have that before where we would talk to the families and we would talk to like, you know, student study teams. But the students themselves were never really a part of that conversation.
And when they feel success, my students, they want to do more. And then the last thing that that kind of blows their mind and blew my mind was when we drew a diagram of our brain and how our brain learns to read. And we showed them where they were in the reading process on a brain, a visual brain on paper. That motivated them to want to get reading from this part of their brain to the back of their brain. And they kept telling me, oh my gosh, I got it. The fluency, I got it to the back of my brain. From their little mouths, the joy in their eyes, like makes me want to wake up every morning so I can do it some more.
Right to our next video is around the math work and I'm going to leave my volume on since that seemed to work.
Take something like math, for example. All of us went to school and experienced math where you sit down and the teacher gives you 25 questions and maybe shows you a couple of times how to do a few examples. Maybe you do one as a class together. But at some point in the class, you're told, these are your math problems. Raise your hand if you need help.
Heads that used to be down are up. Eyes that used to be looking out the window are looking at each other, looking at the board. Voices that used to say, I can't, or I only can do it if my teacher's helping me. Those same voices are starting to say, well, maybe I can try or maybe I can get myself started.
We're not just reaching kids in our room, but we're seeing how their growth is increasing each year as they come from an experience with one teacher and move on to the experience of the new teacher. And these are all teachers who've collaborated closely together.
It's such a special, unique and meaningful opportunity to share that with another teacher where we get to take a lesson plan and think about it together and ask specifically, how will we make it work for this group or this student or this team?
We started with a group of teachers. We asked them, how are the current math pathways functioning for kids, both in the classroom and in terms of access?
The math pathway work in this district has had different iterations where students have not necessarily been able to access algebra by the time they leave our school system, but now they can. And this is the first year where I'm excited to share that any student who wants to elect to take math, algebra in particular, by the time they leave our schools, they can. Previously, we had assessments where students had to demonstrate proficiency in order to access algebra.
The result of that has been, we've seen in eighth grade, more than 6% increase in the number of students who are taking algebra.
I get to collaborate with a team of 11 elementary math TOSSAs as well as 15 middle school math teachers who also have some release periods and the site leaders at 22 of our schools here in the district. Through this collaboration, we've been able to really shift our math focus to teaching and learning inside the classroom.
We have developed curriculum supports in the math department called Math Mindset Routines. And those are a way to open each and every lesson that gives students opportunity to participate in a way that's.
We're going to pause there and go ahead. Just again, this is just trying to provide confidence.
My name is Gabriella. Everybody call me Gabby. I am a Para II and I love young kids. This is actually my passion. One of my favorite activities is the art. I love art, but I love the art of our kids. I'm a parent and I wish my kids would have art like this. I can see parents really so happy and it's like, we made a craft with our little hands. We're going to save it so we know how little your hands were. What I always tell parents is we're playing, but we're learning. Every toy in here has a purpose. It's really joyful that here they came, they didn't speak English, they didn't know letters, they didn't know colors or shapes. And now they're going to kindergarten and they already know this. They can follow, they know what to do later. Because over here, we're playing, but we're learning. I came in 2012, but it was really hard at the beginning because the teachers wanted me to speak English and I, and I didn't know anything, you know? I feel it's really difficult for kids too. Comforting parents and the kids, it's just something that gives me like happiness.
So, so one other, let's see. Can we jump back for a second? Okay. Skip to, I wanted to speak to the absenteeism.
It's a nice page after that.
Yeah, there we go. Okay. Apologies. I'm going to speak to the absenteeism. One other context that we do want to spend some time talking about, and we'll come back to the chart here that talks about the changes in the enrollment in the district. But speaking about the, the impact of most recent policies and climate, which is really impacting our students' achievement, excuse me, our students' attendance. And we just wanted to share with you that we've been looking very closely at the attendance rates and patterns from last year. And one of the things that has really struck us is that if you look at our day, our average daily absences in the fall, essentially into winter, December 31st of 2024, we had an average of 581 students absent on any given day. After that, as we got into this period of time where, you know, families and students felt less secure, you can see that that average daily absence rate has increased, you know, basically more than 50%. And when we talk about the work that we're trying to do with kids, if they're not in school, that, that, that has a very terrific effect. So that is just another context that we're wrestling with as we start looking at the math data. Okay, thank you. Then just go back to, yeah. So then when we think about the students that might be impacted by these circumstances, you know, first, we would want to spend time thinking about, well, our English learners, right? And if you look at the chart here, you can see that in our district, over the last five or six years, the percentage of our students who are English learners has climbed about seven percentage points. But that's probably more than, almost a 50% increase from where we were in 2018, 19. So, so that background context matters as we're thinking about the data that you're about to look at. Related to that too, I think we should look at the number of students or percentage of students with high economic need. And that's the, the blue line there. And you'll see that again, since 2018, 19, we've had, again, almost a 50% increase in the percentage of students who come from families who have high economic need. A second impact that we have to think about as we're looking at the achievement data. Thank you. So then thinking about the work that we've actually done, I'm going to let Pam and Kenyetta and Aleida talk to that. And then we'll jump in with that, that context in looking at the actual performance data.
Thank you. You know, I'm fortunate to be able to talk a lot about this work in early literacy. And I know we have had board study sessions over the last couple of years. But we wanted to point out some really specific and important strategies that we're doing to support the early literacy work. So, I mean, a huge strategy, which we saw a little bit about in that preschool video, that doesn't necessarily show in some of the data pieces that we know is happening, is that dramatic increase in the amount of students that are attending our preschools. And you'll see a little bit of that in some of the kindergarten data. But that's, we've had a 400% increase over the last three years. We, as you know, we implemented a K two structured literacy program in our, in all of our schools. And something that, that's happened over the last year is really us identifying in third through fifth, because now that we have students that have been part of the K two, going into third, fourth, third, fourth and fifth, who might still have reading difficulties, what are some interventions that we're putting in place with them? So the language and literacy TOSA team, working in conjunction with the multilingual team, really looks at that and tries to determine, is it a reading difficulty? Is it a language issue? And then what do we do to support them in upper grades? Because like I said, we, which we said in the video is when students leave us in second grade, if they're still struggling in reading, it's difficult to catch up fully. We have a strategy that's been in place over the, since we started this work, the 20 plus language and literacy TOSSAs that are at all of our school sites. Our Title I schools have more than one language and literacy TOSA. We work in collaboration and even tomorrow, we're meeting across TOSA teams. So the language and literacy, the multilingual, and sometimes even the math, we work together because we want to think about the whole child and we want to think about the experiences they have across the day, not just in just the small time that they're in the PATH program. Those TOSSAs are supporting not only, you know, students maybe that need some intervention, but really around tier one instruction. Because the more students that we get with under tier one instruction in the classroom, the better it's going to be for them. And then something new that we started over the last year is our TOSSAs and some teachers are participating in a two-year letters training. It's a really in-depth training, I would say, like a college course that they're doing on their own time. We're paying for the registration, but they do it after school, they do it in evenings, they take virtual classes. And that's giving them a lot of information about what students need to know if they're not successful in our reading program. So we're really excited that we have a cadre of teachers and TOSSAs that are taking that course. And we'll deal in.
Okay, so.
Turn your sound.
My video is okay. Good evening, everyone. So to speak a little bit about the work that we're doing to support multilingual students, we're going to start by talking about elementary. So this is year four in which our team has been supporting the implementation of integrated and designated ELD. Specifically, we're, we've been using the district professional development days to support the work. And what this looks like is that because we currently only have four multilingual TOSSAs at the elementary level, we do a trainer of trainers model, which means that our TOSSAs and myself, we train the language and literacy TOSSAs and our principals the strategies so that they, they can deliver the professional development to the teachers themselves. So this is the model we've been using the last couple of years. And we've received positive feedback because it allows teachers to be at their school sites and be collaborating with their own colleagues around what the strategy might look like at their school site to serve the needs of their specific students. And the three signature strategies that we've been implementing are the language function wall, the cognitive content dictionary, and constructive conversations, which are easy to implement strategies, but in essence, support students to access content by giving them the tools to become proficient in, you know, academic language. And we've been implementing the strategies across all the elementary schools. And I'll talk a little bit more about the middle school, but that's what we want to start doing this year. In addition to learning about strategies, one way that we support teachers is by ensuring that they can implement the strategy targeting a specific student. So during the professional development, they look at a student profile and they, they develop what we call student acceleration plans, which means that they dive into analyzing student data, developing a plan, an action plan for how to support the student and then action, action plans for themselves as teachers as well. And looking into how they're implementing the strategy specifically for supporting that local student. We also talk about the importance of making commitments in our practice. So part of that is talking with your colleagues and ensuring that what, what parts of these strategies you're going to be implementing across the entire school year. So that's something that we also include in the professional development. And new this year is we're starting instructional walkthroughs at all the 21 schools or 20 for now. And Kenyatta and Pam are joining us in those walkthroughs. And the objective of those walkthroughs are to walk through both ELD classes and also content like PE or math or science to look for evidence of the strategies being implemented. And then we follow up with a conversation with the principals about what sort of next steps or supports do the teachers need to ensure that the strategies are being implemented. As I mentioned, we have four multilingual learner TOSSAs at the elementary level. And they mostly focus their work around coaching teachers. What is, what do the teachers need to be able to implement the strategies and support multilingual students? So coaching looks like co-teaching, supporting teachers with lesson design, modeling a lesson for teachers, and then having conversations with teachers and debriefing about their own practice. And so TOSSAs are becoming proficient in using formal coaching cycles for both of those. At the middle school level, we have two multilingual TOSSAs. And the efforts have been focused around building professional development for ELD teachers and using the guiding principles for designated ELD. So making sure that our ELD teachers are building their own capacity and using the ELD standards, those elements that we want to see in all of those classrooms. And one of the big things that we're starting this year, in fact, our first meeting was just prior to this board study session, is the duly identified committee. Because we know that we do have a significant number of multilingual students who also participate in special education services. So for these students, we need to ensure that they're also getting an ELD class. And at the same time, we're supporting them so that they can reclassify. So our district has approved new reclassification criteria for duly identified students. And we're also making sure that that criteria meets the needs of the duly identified students. So each of those criteria has been tailored to the needs of duly identified students. And one of our big goals is to ensure that they have ELD, they're participating in those reclassification pathways and that the IEP goals are culturally and linguistically appropriate for the students. In addition to that, we also have a significant number of long-term English language learners in our district, approximately 500. And so what our district is doing now is we are taking a school team. So we're taking Abbott. Abbott has identified staff members and we are going through a year-long training with the County Office of Education to design our own interventions and supports specifically for long-term English language learners. And that's something that we're starting this year. And want to bring it back to the district so that other schools can also start implementing that. As I mentioned before, we're also doing the instructional walkthroughs at the middle school level and looking for evidence of designated integrated ELD. This week, we visited Abbott and Burrell and Kenyatta was joined us and even Pam joined in to one of those sessions so we can have a multidisciplinary conversation with the principals. And lastly, the two multilingual TOSSAs are mostly also spending their time coaching ELD teachers, but they're also collaborating with the school principals around what other strategies can be used throughout the school day. And they're also supporting student placement, making sure that multilingual students are being placed in the right courses and helping teachers with goal setting.
All right, so middle school. Good evening, everyone. So in addition to the EL strategies that Aleida just shared at our middle schools, we've also, within the last several years, implemented new curriculum in social studies, language arts and science. For the past two years, we focused on each comprehensive middle school, also establishing an instructional leadership team, call the instructional leadership team I L T for short. The site I L T primary focus is to align and improve instructional practices across the schools. Teachers who participate in the site I L T are also invited to participate in a district I L T. So that means bringing the teachers who are at their sites together in a group at the district level. At the district I L T, we provide professional development that focuses on building teacher leader capacity so that they can go back to their sites to facilitate professional learning during staff meetings. That's a, that's a shift. Teachers haven't really leaned into those roles in the past and that's a new piece for us. We also, at the district I L T level, provide PD for them to effectively coach. Aleida kind of laid out what the coaching piece is and what that means in terms of modeling and lesson design and planning together. In partnership also with the principal, a site I L T member is also analyzing data with their principal to identify like a collective why. What is the data telling us? What is it telling us we need to do differently? And from that, how can we develop a site-specific instructional focus for the year? So once the site instructional focus for the year is established, this is the first year where they've collectively done that. Next step for the site I L T, identifying their instructional goal or their inquiry question is for them to then go back to their departments and distill it down at the department content level to say, okay, this is our site goal. What does that mean if we're social studies teachers? What does it mean if we're a math teacher? What does it mean for PE? Again, still tied to the, the school goal. From there, you need a structure to, to engage in a work. That structure is the cycle of inquiry, right? So you need to be able to plan it, have collaboration time, talk about what strategies you're using. From that, be in each other's classrooms and collecting data. Observe colleague, colleague tell you what the look fours are for that particular question. Will you come in my class? I want you to look for this, or I want you to look for that. Then they come back, we've collected the data and they have those collaborative conversations, see, like, how did it go? And then they iterate and modify from there. So that's a very unique process to instructional leadership teams where you're moving away from some of the managerial stuff that those teams used to do more to an instructional focus that's tied to the data. So that's the leadership focus and strategy. This is our math focus here on this slide. At the heart of our math strategy is authentic teacher collaboration. And we spend quite a bit of time talking about what's the difference between two teachers cooperating with each other and talking in the whole way versus true collaboration, which means you're going beyond sharing ideas, but you're now starting to kind of investigate why students are performing the way they're performing and then engage in a particular structure. As I mentioned, like a cycle of inquiry to figure out what's going on. So our math team has been doing this work for many years. And one of the things you'll be able to see later on in some of the data slides is like what's happened as a result of implementing this. Like what's happened as a result of implementing this. You'll be able to see some of that in the data. Um, we recognize that with this particular strategy, deep collaboration with our teachers really does take time. It's a skill you have to learn. It's not something that you necessarily leave a program and you know how to do it. But we do know when you are tracking student data and you're engaging in data conversations at the site level. You have to figure out as a team, what do we do next? Because teachers learn best from each other. They learn best by being in each other's classrooms. Seeing how a lesson goes. Well, one particular teacher, successful, great. Maybe my lesson was as successful. Now let's have a conversation about what we need to do differently. What did you do? Okay, I'm gonna try that next time. And now let's come back and continue the conversation. So. Our math team has been engaging in a lot of that work for a while. Um, and we'll see some of the data around that later on.
Actually, let's go ahead. I'm gonna move this a little bit forward. Um, go ahead and skip that slide. So. Um, so here, we're gonna start looking first um, with the data. We'll start looking at um. Our um, our CASP data. Again, remember, we're looking at our ELA and our math data. Um, and you can see here, this is sort of the broad view, right? From in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. You can see the percentage of students who met or exceeded, et cetera. So um, it was fifty-five percent roughly in ELA la- uh, year before. And um, almost fifty-one percent in mathematics. And then this is the preliminary data and I think to emphasize, we're literally uh, using our own internal analysis. Uh, but you'll see where uh, there's been a slight dip overall, um, both in. ELA and mathematics, uh, relatively flat. And so of course, this is something that we're looking at. Um, but actually, the, the goal of tonight. Is to try to get behind that and try to understand, okay, this is sort of overall. A flat slight decrease, but what, what's actually behind that data? And this is the. Um, our interest tonight is looking at different groups of students and seeing how their performance um, has, has played out. So let's start looking at um, some specific um, equity groups of students. Here you can see the um, ELA and math data for our English learners. Um, and um, relatively flat or a slight decrease. So this is again, we're digging in and trying to understand. Um, looking at the CASP data, what's going on here? Uh, we'll, we will be getting in a few minutes to looking at other measures that we think give us some insight. Um, into, into this CASP data. One of the other things that we just mentioned early on, that I just want to come back and say. Uh, when we're thinking about the impact of, of like, when we're looking at the overall data, we do have to look at the. Combination of decreasing enrollment in our district and an increasing enrollment. And uh, student groups that historically have been outside the sphere of success. So when we think about um, for example, our English learners. You can see that, you know, we've, we've roughly three hundred more students in our district. That's that. Almost fifty percent increase overall when you factor in the enrollment drop. And here's an opportunity then to start looking at, well, English learners, but what about English learners? Who don't have a, a economic need and students who, English learners who do have economic need. I'm just gonna let you sit for a second and look at the, the differences in the performance. So again, the, this is ELA and math together. And you can see, um, for example, math for students, EL students without economic need who met or exceeded is, you know, been. Thirty percent range with economic need, it's at six percent.
Do you mind defining, you know, what constitutes high economic need versus not?
Yeah, it's basically, it's families that qualify for free and reduced-priced lunch. Um, and who are, you know, the, the state phrase is socio-economically disadvantaged. It's a. Fortunately, a very deficit-framed term.
Yeah.
Um, it also, there is a bit of a factor in um, the amount of schooling beyond high school. That's another. Factor that goes into the S C D.
Interesting.
And we, we do have a significant amount of students that also um. Are not able to pay for after-school programs that we allow in our district as well. So.
Yeah.
We mostly provide.
Yes, provide for them.
So that four hundred percent increase that we referred to earlier is basically entirely in that population of students who are. Uh, not able to pay for after. So, so we're, we're getting them started earlier for the reasons you're seeing here. Now, again, this is preschool. I should remind us that CASP testing starts in third grade. So we're still. You know, between preschool and our foundational literacy work. You know, we're barely starting to see those students coming into this CASP testing ring.
And to put a number on it, you think about a family of five qualifying income would be annual income of seventy-six thousand dollars. So it's. You know, families in need.
Well, but you know, do you know that a family of five making two hundred thousand is.
Yes, right. So that's. Here it is. So that's even, yeah.
So we, we, we're kind of, we're, we're pivoting in a space where. I think there's more economic need than we probably are.
Yeah, we're the line. Yeah, that's the thing.
Okay, so here's an opportunity to look at our students with disabilities and we're gonna follow the same pattern and then we're gonna look at this question of. Kind of looking at them based on economic need. But here's the data over the last three years. Um, the numbers there have, you know, in terms of actual enrollment are, are pretty steady. Um, you have the same number percentage of students over the last several years. And then here, um, here's looking at, um, now here actually, apologize, I suggested it was around economic need. Actually, this is now looking at the duly identified. Students that um, Alada mentioned earlier. So. Look at the performance of English-only students with an IEP compared to English learner students with an IEP. Then uh, we'll take a look here at um, by gender. Again, uh, females met and exceeded, females not met. And this is in math, just to emphasize. And now we're looking at by gender, um, but also around economic need. So on the left is without. Um, on the right is with. Okay, so um, having, you know, uh, as we look at that CASP data, the key thing that we say to ourselves, oh, what are the other measures we have to look at? To understand how our students are doing. And so we're gonna spend some time now talking about. Um, our interim assessment data as a, um, another piece of, of data that we spend time um, trying to understand. Our students' performance.
Yeah, thank you. Um, we, we, we get to spend some time talking about this at a board study session, I know, in the spring. So. And you've seen a lot of this data, so I'll just make a few key points over the next few slides. Um, last year when we met and we shared in the video that in March, we already saw students. Outperforming how they did in May the year before. So just wanted you to see actually, how did it look last year? And I think we saw. Tremendous growth in our students across the board. Um, and we talked a lot about. When you think about students in tier one, we want to see at least eighty percent of students. Meeting um, the threshold in tier one and we see that across the board. Um, and obviously some. Variance uh, in the K first and second. Then you can kind of, then you can see our, some student population that we. Kind of really look for. And we saw that even in March, we started seeing like, wow, it's like doubling for them. So we're excited to see that continued. Um, pulling out the kindergarten uh, over the next few slides, looking at what happened year one in May. So the first year we gave the assessment and then what happened last um, May. Um, kindergarten assessment's a little different than the first and second. It's an alphabet test. Do they know the sounds? Can they write the sounds? Can they hear the sounds? And so. It, you know, one thing that we're seeing in kinder because of the work we've been doing in preschool, our students are. Coming in really ready and we're continuing to see them grow. So we've made. First, you know, a, a big percentage point difference between the first um, time we gave the assessment. And the second in kinder, I mean, the third, sorry, May twenty twenty-three to May twenty twenty-five. Again, first and second grade, uh, May twenty twenty-three, the first time we gave it to May twenty twenty-five across the board. Um, we're seeing a decline in students that are not meeting and we're seeing an increase in the students who are meeting and exceeding. Do, you know, when I think about first and second, we want to continue to see those numbers grow. Again, pointing back to the um, teachers that are taking those trainings. To really dive in what is really going on or work with the multilingual team, because it's not just about the foundational skills. That's the work that we want to do when we're looking at these numbers. But again, overall, we're seeing some really good numbers. Um, for being year three. Um, this is some of that fun day that we see across our student groups. Where we're seeing from May, the first year we gave it twenty twenty-three and May, this last May twenty twenty-five. Just pointing out a couple of, to me, amazing numbers when I think about, does this program work? Well, we're seeing our Latinx students have, you know, made a, almost a thirty-point difference from when we first. Give the assessment till now. Um, same with our um, Pacific Islander, Native Hawaiian. Our English learners, students with IEPs and our students that have high economic need. These numbers are just outstanding. And I know there's more work for us to do, but we need to celebrate those moments. Um, and then just the alternate side, or uh, the students meeting and exceeding, uh, you know, we continue to see growth here. I, I, you know, looking at this, um, there are some students that are probably still in nearly meeting, which is why we don't. See that number, but that's our work. And that's the work we wanted to do to find out, how do we get students out of not meeting? You know, and to the nearly meeting to getting them to meeting and exceeding. Alright, so before we jump into some of our math CFA data, just want to orientate you a little bit around our math pathways. In a way of a little bit of a review. So um, several years ago, we moved to math six heterogeneous classrooms. Um, and from there, our pathway. Shows that when you look at the grade seven, a student can demonstrate proficiency in seventh grade standards by taking an assessment. If they do that, if you look at the very bottom, a student can be a seventh grader taking math eight. Okay? Um, from there, those students go on in eighth grade to take algebra. One of the things we did two years ago is offer a double math. As a way for students who are interested in math, love math, enjoy math. To be able to take algebra as a double course. So that means that they take math eight. The first part of the year, algebra, second part of the year, and they get to do that in eighth grade. So that's our math pathway and that's the current iteration. Next slide, please. This is adding now, and you've seen this slide in the past, but now we're adding in our twenty-five, twenty-six data. And in, you can, you can look at this and see what it says. Just to call out the notable improvement in the number of students that we have enrolled. And yes, we have our um, equity groups on the right side and we see that we're making some. Some strides in the right direction. We still have work there to do, but we're trending in the right direction. So this is our first CFA slide. Um, this is math CFA. Data and I wanted to show you this data in particular. Last year, we looked at seventh grade. We're gonna look at this one because this is the first year when we went to the heterogeneous math six course. Where all the kids were in math six together. And you can see that um, overall, we're trending up. What's notable on this slide is to see the twelve percent increase in our high economic need students. Um, six percent increase for students with IEPs and four percent for EL. On this assessment, we compare twenty-three and twenty-five. Next slide, please. Math eight. So this is our second year offering the double math and I wanted to show this one to, again, due to twenty-three, twenty-five comparison. So now that we have more students enrolled in algebra, what do we see in the data? So we see overall a twenty-six percent increase in our Latinx high economic need in EL students and how they're performing.
And with, just to jump in with a little flipping back and forth between the math six slide and the math eight. You can actually say the students who are in eighth grade here were sixth graders on the previous slide. So.
So who's cool or.
Yeah. Yeah. So if you look at the high economic need, for example, it's gone. It's gone from fifty-one, fifty-two percent. Up to as eighth graders, seventy-four percent. So almost a twenty-point increase for that. You know, it's not absolutely magical or kind of thing, but it's, it's, it's the same.
Um, so let's uh, kind of go back into the elementary. We haven't um. Shared this particular like this. Um, remember the common formative assessments. Or assessments that we develop based on the curriculum. In elementary, they do a portion from the ZERN curriculum. And then they do a performance task with, which is not necessarily tied to ZERN, but tied to the content. That they're learning. And so when we look at K five, you know, we see some areas that are a little flat. Um, we see a little bit more increase of performance again from the twenty twenty-three to last. Um, we do this, we do this um, in winter, like February, um, the same assessment. So we do see more students doing a little bit better on the performance task. Maybe not percentage-wise, but we're seeing increases. And for us, that signifies the performance task is actually a little bit more difficult. Cause students have to apply what they're learning. So we like seeing that there, but you know, when you look at the numbers across the board. It's one of the things that when we talked, we said, you know, are we ready to start looking at a. Different sort of math curriculum that matches the way we want to see teaching and learning like from those videos. So that, that gives us um. Some of that information there. The next two slides are fourth and fifth grade. Um, because one of the strategies in elementary with our elementary math TOSAs. Over the last few years was to focus on these two grade levels while K two and K three were doing the early literacy work. Um, so you can see again in fourth grade, the ZERN portion of the assessment, there's been an increase. Um, e- except, um, let's see at the end, students with IEPs, not the increase there. Um, and then again, in the, the performance task, we see more students. Doing better, which again signifies to us that the, the larger math work, what we call around the standards for mathematical practice are more. Present in that sort of assessment than, because the ZERN is more multiple choice. Um, and then this is the fifth grade data. So again, same thing here, fifth grade seems to be performing better on the ZERN portion than the performance task portion of the assessment. But again, seeing some increases from where we were from twenty twenty-three.
Alright, yeah. And then so the next several slides, which is again, it's just an opportunity to. Take different looks at uh, the CASP data over the last three years. So um, you'll see here, we're looking, I brought forward the slide that we previously looked at a minute ago. So this is. This is for English learners and go ahead to the next. And you can see now, uh, we're looking at students who've actually reclassified. And you can see the importance, the emphasis that we've been placing on moving students and it, to the point where they can reclassify because. You, you just, you see a completely the opposite level of performance. And then here is the performance um, data for our English-only students. And we should make a point again about. Some of the enrollment shifts that we've experienced since two thousand nineteen. You can see about a thousand student. Decrease in the number of English-only students in our district. So again, kind of going back to that overall data and seeing the slight flatness and even slightly decline. But if you think of these demographic shifts, it's something to, to factor in. And here we have for white students. And again, you can see enrollment drop. Sorry, that's fine. Just that it was pretty significant. And now. Now we're looking at actually white students of high economic need. And we'll follow this pattern for the next couple of slides. So here we have Latinx students. And overall, that enrollment has been fairly consistent in the last five years, even though the enrollment of English learners has increased. So again, these groups are overlapping, right? It's part of what we're trying to piece apart here. And then if you look at the, the difference between the uh, students overall and then Latinx students with high economic need. And here's our black students. And then this is with high economic need.
So um, quick question. So the figures that are here. Um, the one that, the one that says, you know, the not met percentages, is this? This is excluding than the nearly met.
Yeah, we've, we've chosen the met exceeded and the not met, just partly just to try to simplify. Yeah.
Yeah, I know. There's like an infinite number.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I think, uh, you know, there was prior board meetings where we were emphasizing the met exceeded and we heard from you, could we also see the not?
Yeah.
So again, it's trying to make the data clear and easily digestible, but also giving the information.
Yeah.
So here's the performance of. So here's the performance of Asian students, and a slight decrease in enrollment since two thousand nineteen there. And then the high need Asian students. Again, there are a lot of ways that we can cut this data, but the, the focus on economic need is quite illustrative of the work we have in front of us. All right, that's a lot. A lot of context and a lot of data, but so want to turn it over to you with any questions and any, certainly any guidance that you might have for us.
Well, thank you for this wonderful presentation. It definitely is eye-opening. Some great things happening, and obviously a lot more work to do. One of the concerns I've had is for the students who are not identified as ALD or with an IEP or ELA. When we have students that doesn't fall any into those categories. I know that we are implementing and have implemented many different strategies for the ALD students. When the teachers are trained to incorporate these strategies to help these students with the high needs, are they trained to? Are they trying to shift those skills to, or those strategies to other students, even if they're not identified with those different titles? And I think that's really important because it shouldn't take an IEP or a classification to implement these strategies if they know it can help a student. So I, I'm just curious how we train.
The multilingual learner strategies are actually good for all students.
Right.
And so what we tell our teachers is that they should be implemented classroom-wide to all the students so that anyone can benefit from them as well.
Okay, and I, I guess what, what my concern is, is that some teachers can choose to pick and choose who they, you know, shift these strategies to. Wondering if it's something that we can incorporate as part of our strategies that we, you know, give to all of our students should they need them. I mean, I just think it's something that should shift if, if, if there's a need. I mean, these are strategies that we are equipping our teachers to, you know, meet the needs of our students. So I, I mean, I'm just really, because we do have a lot of students who fought through the crack if they do not meet any of these categories.
I think the tier one work that we talk a lot about, we say that in the coaching or the instructional leadership teamwork that's happening in middle school, it's looking at what's happening in your whole classroom. And so it's, even though some strategies might be strategies for this specific group or the data, you know, we're showing data with specific student groups that we know will need maybe more about more than what's happening in tier one. But the work in tier one addresses all of that because it's about the teacher with their students, how are we meeting the needs of all the kids in there? And then equity strategy is then, you know, most students will get what they need in there. And if they don't, they don't need an IEP, then we can still get them in tier one, right? If they do, or even in tier two, which is, which could still be in the classroom, just additional strategies. And then you just kind of keep layering on, but some of those strategies might happen after school or might happen with an IP or might happen in an ELD class if you're, if you're a multilingual learner. But a tier one work, and I'll even say tier two, happens in the classroom with all kids. But yeah, but it's diverse, it's a diverse.
I just want like the teachers to be aware that this can happen.
Yes, we, that's why we, we train all of the elementary school teachers because we know that even if they don't have, you know, a multilingual student or a student with a different learning style, these strategies help everyone because it's about giving them all access to the curriculum.
Thank you.
Oh, this was just kind of a clarification question. I just want to make sure that I captured kind of a fuller understanding of everything before, you know, ask me other questions. So when we're looking at kind of this overall data, like as you mentioned, you know, it's relatively flat, maybe there's a slight decrease. And what I'm hearing from all of you is that the, the main why this is happening is, I just want to make sure I'm repeating it, I'm saying it correctly. It sounds like there's a decrease of enrollment overall. There's changing population and enrollment shifts, changing of demographics according to different ones. Is that kind of what we're saying is, is the kind of the why behind some of this data?
That's, that is one of the major reasons that we're looking at. It's difficult to say that and not, and not get into like, are you making excuses, right? And we, so we, we need to be able to understand that context to make sense of the data. And we, we also need to say, and we need to, we need to accelerate. There shouldn't be an effect of student groups in the overall because of the work that we're doing, but we're still seeing that effect, so.
Hi, everyone, how are you?
Hi.
It got to the part, Stacy, where I said, okay, now I'm going to unmute. One of the things that is very common in the state of California, and you'll read about this, this quite a bit over the next couple of months, is the pursuit of test score increases on these statewide exams. And there's a whole industry devoted to basically finding kids and tutoring kids. They, they actually, I find the term a little bit offensive, but it's, it's sort of just accepted in, in our, in our profession. It's called high dosage tutoring is like the buzzword that is really common. Has almost like a medical term which. But it's no, it's for, it's a very real thing. It's actually like, it's weird, but the state actually recommends it. CDE puts out documents, the school districts encouraging them to do it. And part of the reason is that the public's, I'm, I'm using public in a very capital P way. The big public, the, you know, millions and millions of Californians. Their capacity to think about data for schools is like, they only have a couple of seconds to hear how the schools are doing. So it gets reduced down to these very small, easy explanations. And so the State Department of Ed encourages districts to implement high dosage tutoring, but it leaves a lot of kids out. And it doesn't last more than the year in which you provide the tutoring. And our district does almost no state test-wide exam tutoring. As a board, we would be certainly open to hearing your perspective on doing that. And as a, as an educator, Pam and Caneta, Alida and David, myself, and all the incredible educators in the district could absolutely put together some really strong programs to get kids tutored for this state test. But it would take away from teaching and learning that we've planned and organized for. So we're, and, and the other thing I wanted to mention is we've definitely seen an increase in kids meeting the economic criteria, which has, it just involves us doing things to support them because they can learn at a high level, but they start needing more services. So we have to find them and support them in a way that meets their academic and their, and their, and their personal needs. But we also have the second part where we have more kids speaking a second language first and needing language support. What that data is showing you is that when we help kids reclassify, their achievement doesn't just grow, their achievement like bursts upwards. You go from like twenty-eight percent standard to seventy percent. That's, if I could sort of narrow it down, that is what we're focused on doing is finding kids, helping them have that burst of, of growth in their language skills. But you know, more sort of, you know, with respect to the whole district, keeping the focus on, on the rigor and the high-quality teaching that we've put together. But also today's, today's meeting and this session is an opportunity for the board to start to flag to us. Where do you, what do you think about things like us having a more explicit and more focused effort to try to get students state test scores? Because I should say there, all of our internal tests, the kids are doing amazing. And the state tests, they look pretty similar to how they've looked in the last five years. And, and I think that's an important conversation piece for the board tonight as well.
I mean, I think one thing that we haven't, we've talked about a little bit is the preschool program. We're not, I mean, none of those kids are in third grade yet, right? And so we're not seeing, I mean, at least looking at the PATH data, like there are some really big jumps in here in terms of like the literacy improvement. And so I will be really curious to see like, once that first cohort makes its way through third grade, like what that data looks like, but it's going to be a couple of years before we get there. So, I mean, I think, you know, I, I I was actually just talking to someone about like the language development and how, like if you don't do like complex language development early in someone's life, like it, it's actually really hard to develop that later on. So like, we have such an amazing opportunity to develop those skills, like the reading comprehension, the writing. All of those are, they're really hard to do if someone, you know, is, is coming into it later on in life or is like trying to catch up. You know, as, as I think someone mentioned, like if they are not reading at a certain level by the end of second grade, it becomes exponentially harder to catch them up, right? And because, you know, in third grade, you're getting math, the word problems. And so like, if you can't read the problem, then you can't like translate into the math, the math problem. So I think, you know, at least for me, like I am not, I'm not convinced that like a high dosage tutoring is like what I want to focus on. I mean, I think that like what we're, I agree with the approach that we have been taking. And, you know, I think that it, like a lot of things, it just takes time to see results that will build. But yeah, and I, I do want to express appreciation for all of the teachers who are, you know, volunteering their time to like participate in these, in these training programs and to participate in these leadership, these leadership teams. Because I think, you know, like we have just an incredible group of, of really dedicated educators. And I want to recognize that as well.
I was just gonna, if you don't have, I make a comment or a question at the time. I just wanted to say, I don't think I'm like, I, I keep thinking of microdosing. You said something else, but whatever that thing is for the, for the tutoring, I'm not that thrilled. Like, I'm not interested in that. I'm not really focused on wanting to like prepare kids for a test. But what I would be curious to see is, are we taking like a very honest look at our strategies and saying, are these actually working? And are they working like similar to preparing for a test? Are they like preparing them for this assessment and then really not seeing the long-term results? And, and I don't, I think the data doesn't say that, but I'm just wondering, are we like really questioning our practices and thinking about, well, absenteeism is now an issue. What is our, like, what are we going to do about it? And we can't wait years for this, the results because these kids, like, they need to learn now and they are, we need to set them up for success. So I just think being really honest about, okay, these programs, we like them, we feel like they're working, but are they actually working? And are they giving us the results that we want in the timeframe that we need them to do? And I don't know any of those answers. And I do think, I think our teachers are wonderful. I hundred percent trust that they're doing everything they can do for every single student in our district. And I just want us to be, to provide them with everything they need to be as successful as possible. And so I want to thank all of you for being here and the entire district, our teachers and class staff that are really doing everything they can for our kids.
Have we taken a, an assessment with our teachers to have them give some feedback on what they, I mean, I know we provide the tools for them to access and use or to carry out. But do we give them room to give us honest feedback, whether or not they feel these things are working? And if there are other things that we can consider or like what their real opinion is of what we're giving them?
I mean, I, I think we can always do better, but I do think we have good opportunities to give feedback from our teachers. Certainly, when we do the professional learning activities, there's opportunity then to give feedback on how did, you know, how did that professional development support you or not? You know, part of the work around, you know, this, this idea of teacher teams or these kind of collaborative approaches. I mean, our teachers on special assignment get feedback every day from their, the people they're working with about what's working, what's not. And believe me, they definitely tell, they definitely tell our, our folks that way. And, and, you know, I think the importance of this, this new strategic push that we're making to engaging, you know, certainly our teachers as well as our families and, and students in preparation for the second strategic plan. This is, this is going to be another big moment of getting feedback. And, and then just in a very specific way, you know, we, we always ask folks when we do the LCAP, for example, there's a lot of surveying, a lot of engagement around, what do you think about these strategies? And so that's, so I think, you know, we can always do better, but I do think we have some, some real strength in those areas.
And there's always piloting going on, right? Like for various curriculums, like figuring out like, this is going to be better than what we have and things like that. So I think there's like, there's a lot of like layers of, of evaluation. But I mean, it's like, we're always trying to figure out like how to tweak like. The various things, right?
And that's what I was trying to get at, like, if there's a teacher who may have a different teaching style that may, you know, I don't know, be more successful in other areas, you know, are they able to pivot? And, you know, be creative, you know, do things outside of what they have been confined to, to, you know, get their, you know, get their teaching strategies.
Oh, we just add.
Like, we were just very creative, innovative teachers today.
I mean, this is, again, this is the project-based learning work that's tied. This is really us trying to sort of see, you know, what happens when we unleash all this creativity that our teachers have.
They were very excited at eight AM this morning telling us, it was, I mean, like, it was definitely unleashed.
But I would, I would say, you know, maybe some would argue we, we got to it too slowly, but we're doing a math pilot based on a lot of feedback from our teachers about what was working, what was not working. So I would say that's another example.
I had another series of questions. So on this data, the PATH interim assessment data, so on the slides, it's slides twenty-one and twenty-two. I was looking at the data, so like kindergarten, first and second grades. I guess for me, you know, it's May twenty twenty-three, May twenty twenty-five. These are different groups of kindergartners that we're surveying. So I feel like, you know, for me, when I look at this data, it's not super meaningful unless I see maybe where they started. Because it's like, well, yeah, you know, there's a percentage point change, but these are completely different kids. And so I think for me, I would say this kind of general feedback going forward, that would be more helpful for me to understand, yes, that, that context a bit better. Like, you know, David, you had us like flipping back and forth, and I was like, oh, this is really good. Like, that's what I want to see, right? Like the, I was doing one of those like, you know, back in the days, like when you were trying to animate the, the flip books. I was like all flip booking this. And so for me, that would, I think that would help make this data a little bit more meaningful on slides twenty-one and twenty-two. Because it's like, well, it looks good, right? But it's like, well, but it's not the same kids. And so I would, that's just kind of one piece of feedback that I had. And then, you know, we skipped over it, and like when I was looking at the notes prior to us coming here, it was like the one that I put a big fat question mark with, what is this? Like, this is the one sheet that I could not figure out on my own. I think it's slide eleven. I was just wondering if, you know, you don't have to go into great detail, but just an overview of like, what am I looking at here?
It just looks at, and I know Tracy Kim had his hand up. Okay, let's just, well, we can show it really quick.
This was meant to be a bit of an into activity as you, as we talk about. So we were, we were going to, so this is, this is the bands of, you know, exceeding, meeting, nearly meeting, not meeting for all of our schools. But we were, but it's, it's slightly different groups. One is overall for our schools. And, and then the other two are. And and then the other two are um, this kind of without need, with need. And kind of asking you to think about what would you anticipate was which group, which chart belonged to which group of, of students?
Oh, how interesting.
Explain that well, I may have not explained that well.
David, if I can chime in here. I, I was the, I was the uh, protagonist for this slide, so. When you're talking about a, a school of kids, let's just, let's use an actual school and, and, and kind of narrow in on that. Let's use Meadow Heights Elementary School. And what you're looking at this is a data set where. At Meadow Heights Elementary School, there's about fifty some odd kids that take these tests in third grade, another fifty or so in fourth grade and fifth grade. It's not exact numbers, but it's pretty close to that, right? And uh, the chart in the middle is showing you everyone at that school. So you've got some kids scoring in the blue, which is exceeding, some kids in the green, which is meeting, some kids in the yellow, which is. Nearly meeting, and then some kids in the red who are not meeting. And the chart is basically showing you everyone in the school. Um, and then the chart on the left-hand side is if I show you only the students. Who are multilingual learners. And so you see the red starts to stretch out way more. And then the chart on the other side is the chart at the same school with ostensibly starting point, the same kids. But if you only include kids who began speaking English only when they entered our schools. The idea was to sort of have a conversation about. The impact that just initial language fluency has. But at the same time, they're all in the same class, they're all with the same teacher, they're all. Uh, in my opinion, benefiting from really great instruction from the team there at Meadow Heights, including the veteran staff and, and the. Really, really strong instructional leader principal, but it's something for us to look at, because not every school. Will have that same demographic shift. We have other schools where there are very few kids who start. As non-English dominant speakers, and as a result, those scores look different. And they re, they have a connection to where students came into the system in terms of their readiness. To start learning in English when they came in as kinders and to sort of. Connect that to what Maggie said just a few minutes ago. We've disrupted that, that gap by creating preschools at Sunny Bay Lee Laurel and Park. And expanding the preschools at um, Fiesta Gardens or Turnbull, which is gonna have a big effect on. Schools like Meadow Heights not really having very many kids start far behind. But it is gonna take another two years to see that data roll in uh, to third grade and then beyond.
We weren't doing. Alright, thank you. Um, Jean, you have your hand, you. We'll turn it over to you, trustee Kim.
Apologies, I'm not there in person, I'm not feeling great right now, so I may be a bit rough, I'm speaking for part of it, but just didn't wanna thank you all again for putting this together. I really appreciate how in prior sessions the feedback we've given about the data is really reflected in these slides, so appreciate you taking the time to put this together. I did have a few quick comments, um, one I wanted to follow up on, which was C Pop, it said. I think I agree with superintendent, you know, there have been some recent scandals for districts, I think it was um, in LA County. That really were hyper fixated on teaching to the test. And that, you know, avoiding teaching to the test is something we've been talking about, at least in my world since two thousand six. It's something that's been in ed space about one of the biggest challenges and flaws we see in the education system. But I think to trustee Proctor's point, one thing I hear constantly from our community, our parents, and as the superintendent brings. Is that the test scores do become kind of the one sentence, you know, description of our success or failure. And so when I look at these stats about what our Zern shows or what our common performance shows. Um, and they're in the seventies and eighty percent, but the CASP scores are still in the fifties. And again, accounting for the fact that K through second isn't included, other types of adjustments. I know that just creates a certain, you know, it is very hard to celebrate our progress, as I've said before, when half of our students aren't at math level. And so, one thing that just I, occurred to me, so I used to tutor uh, math in Oakland for many years when I was at Cal. And a lot of times, it wasn't so much a comprehension gap, it was a test-taking gap bluntly. It was whether or not they knew how to recognize certain question stems, knew what those types of problems look like. Difference between being able to read or being able to solve a reading comprehension question that has a very specific type of. Question stem thesis and line uh, that goes with it. And while I fully agree with the superintendent, if we had to choose one or the other, I would choose building enthusiasm, building concepts. Uh, building literacy and all the core skills. It doesn't seem to me that the two should be mutually exclusive, and I'm not suggesting, I forgot the actual word because trustee Proctor put microdosing in my head. The dosing approach. Which sounds worse now that I think about it. But I think it's an unfortunate reality, that our schools, our students, even when they leave our district, will be evaluated to some degree. Based on their ability to handle these types of evaluations. And so again, not something we should spend a ton of time focusing on, definitely not replicating, I believe it was what Downey and other districts have done. But it does seem like a conversation worth having, because it's very hard for me when I go out there and talk about what I've seen in the classroom, what our teachers are doing. The type of excitement, engagement, all the innovations we're putting in the classroom, and yet the first question again is, then why haven't we moved the needle? And why are other districts advancing and ours isn't by comparison? And when I mention our internal metrics or assessments, it's very easy for folks to say. You know, it's, it's harder to trust something district controls versus one that the state runs objectively. And so I just would like to see whatever methods we're doing, and again, I'm very supportive of all the innovations doing on math, on reading. Everything else we put in our district. If that never translates into test scores, that would be a concern to me. That would make me feel like somewhere we've dropped the ball, somewhere we've missed a step. And so that's just something that, at least from my view, again, I don't speak for the other trustees, is something that I would like to see. But I don't want that to be taken as a, let's refocus our whole strategy on one exam, because we've seen that backfire for so many students over the years. And so I think trying to find, recognizing where those gaps are, why we're not seeing the same type of results we see internally at the test level. And doing whatever we can to help. Close that gap, I think, will go a long ways towards building faith that all these innovations, that again, we see our teachers see in the classroom. We wanna make sure that's reflected in the way that I think the rest of our community can see as well. Um, and I did wanna point out specifically, one question we've asked about before, and it's not really the focus of this conversation, but I did wanna ask it. I think on slide ten, there was a point on math about alignment. Uh, between different schools, I just wanted more alignment of expectations across schools. I just want more clarity about what that specific bullet was referencing.
Yeah, um, thank you for that question, trustee Kim. So the alignment work happens weekly, so one of the things we've mentioned before, you saw a little bit of it in the video. Is that teachers at the middle school level have release periods. And so if you're a teacher who is deciding, yes, I want a release period, that means you are saying yes to coaching. But you're also saying yes to weekly meetings where you get on a virtual call. Um, we were gonna move those meetings to in-person this year, but in the past, they were on a virtual call. And say a six, six um, grade teacher who has a release period at Bowditch would be in a meeting with um, Burrell. With Abbott, with, and they all would be on the same call talking about the lessons for that week. And talking about, okay, so what is it we are um, wanting, what's the learning objective for this lesson? So what are the, the student-facing pieces to this? What are our expectations around how we're gonna open this lesson? Where are the um, moments where we're gonna have kids talking about problems and explaining their learning? So when I say alignment, i- is truly a structure built in there where they are all using that release time to get on a call together to have those curricular conversations. So that they know if a student moves from Abbott to Burrell or Face Eye in sixth grade, they're gonna have a similar experience.
No, that's really great to hear, cuz my second question was whether or not in the future it'd be possible to get this data broken out at the site level. Because so many of the conversations in our district, they're not just comparing our district to neighboring districts, but also our individual sites to neighboring sites. And I think the point that you just made is one that I would love to push out more in the community, because there are misconceptions because of historical performance patterns. Because of different reputations, different sites have, or just different demographics that we see. But I think knowing that the teachers are coordinating across campus with the same type of training, same lesson plan, collaborating to that degree. Kind of helps to eliminate the misconceptions that are out there about teacher quality differentiating between sites or other types of perceptions. That again, are lingering from honestly before almost everyone here joined the district. But the fact that those perceptions are out there, knowing that this type of cross-collaboration is happening constantly, I think reinforces that. We have a new approach that kind of addresses perceived that may be real um, inadequacies or inequities that we saw across campuses. And then just two final questions, I think the last two slides. That had the stats for um, Asian students, does that include NHPS students or are those in a separate category?
I'm, I'm sorry, trustee Kim, does it include? No, it does not, it's, that's a separate.
That's just maybe a slide for later, and then I think one question, the other reason I wanted to look at the site levels, again, with the Montessori schools. With the kinds of different programs we're offering, it would be interesting to see, not saying that would be the only reason we see differences. Again, like you said, there's been a lot of demographic changes across the district and other factors to consider. But I do think it could be interesting to see that kind of site-by-site breakdown to also maybe identify opportunities or gaps or areas that we can focus on. Not that we need more bars on these graphs, but I will.
A lot of bars.
Come up with a creative way to present that data, um, but it is something that I think a lot of folks approach us about within the district. And it would be nice to kind of show how we've, we're measuring that data as well as part of this process.
Um, to trustee Kim's point about basically um, familiarity with like different tests. I've seen um, like basically schools have sent out like, here's some practice exams. So I wonder if it would be useful as well for um. Us to, like, I don't know if we do this already, but like, taking some of those practice questions. And just like integrating them into the instruction, like not just those questions, but sort of sprinkling them in. So that like, if kids see that question, like that kind of question, they're like, oh, I remember when we did it this way, right? Like, I think it can be potentially another way to like introduce or practice the material. Um, cuz like we got, we got the um, the practice test like leading in the weeks, like leading up to the test. But like, there's no reason that we can't be using like the format or like the, the concepts. Like, you know, throughout the school year, like before, right? So I, that's just like one thought, um, and I, you know, I, I agree that a lot of this is like familiarity with test-taking. Protocols or the language of the questions, I mean, one time I, it, you know, it was like the. I don't know if people remember like the, it's not like PSAT that you take in middle school. Um, and my, I, I was talking to my um, brother-in-law, who's about ten years younger than me. So he was like showing me the questions, and I could answer the reading comprehension questions without reading the, the passage. And he was just like, how did you do that? And I was just like, I had just taken like so many of these tests, right? Like, and so to some degree, like if you have like the pattern recognition for it, like. You, you don't need to like necessarily, I mean, I'm not telling people, don't read the passage, but like, there is some sort of like sixth sense to it. Like if you've done it enough times, um, so like I, I'm just thinking of like ways that we can maybe practice. The, the kind of question that might be on the exam without like explicitly being like, this is on the test or like pay extra attention. If that makes sense.
Just make a quick comment, and I think I've learned, I've learned this over the years of being on the board that. And I, I think I've grown in this area where I wanna say that I really truly believe that our educators are experts in this. And I, and I think our goal, our job as a board is to give direction. It sounds like to me, we're all somewhat in agreement that we'd like to see more, maybe more prep, test prep. But um, or making sure our students are prepared for the test, but um, I trust that our educators are gonna know like how to do that. And so, um, you know, I wanna leave it up to, to you all to, to figure out how we get there and the practice part of it. And um, you know, I don't, I'm not a, I'm not a teacher, so I don't know like what are the best ways to do this. But I think for us, our, our job is to really just give direction here, and so.
I wanted to echo, you know, trustee Trent and, and Proctor and Kim, you know, I think. You know, when I think back at, you know, yes, part of my job as a college counselor, right? And also just advising and seeing, you know, tests, standardized testing is unfortunately part of our world, right? SAT, there, when you said the PSAT, all of us nodded in like, our PT, our collective PTSD around that, right? Um, and you know, I think about my own journey, like I was that kind of student, like I knew all the materials, but I didn't know how to take a test. Nobody taught me like, oh, if I can't, if I came down to two questions, two answers of a multiple choice, which is the more right one? And then when I got coaching, when I figured it out, my SAT scores shot through the roof. And so, you know, I think there is a merit, there's merit in learning how to take a test, like you were saying. And I don't wanna take away that very, like, you know, trustee Proctor was saying, that very important instructional time, and that is where it should go. But like, hey, like, you know, throwing in a lesson about like, how do you pick from a multiple choice thing? And like you said, I think there is familiarity and repetition, but I also think there's, there's coaching, right? Just like how we use the, the coaching model, right? Like, we're teaching this group and then they teach, they, they train and do that. And, and so I think we can implement some of that as well. I think that would be, you know, it, without disturbing the, the vast majority of the good work that we are doing. Um, but I do think that's really, you know, it's, it's really important, because most students are not born knowing how to take a test. Um, and so there, there's just a little bit of preparedness for, you know, certain careers and things that require standardized testing. Moving forward. I also wanted to say, uh, because um, as you all know, um, there's not a conversation that. You know, when I see math data and algebra, that I'm not triggered a little bit. So I'm gonna say this, I've said it before, so no one's gonna be surprised. But I think when I look globally at what we're doing in a district in terms of the strategic plan. All the funding that's gone into CCE, Project Career Map, we are helping and really engaging our students. Into preparing them for fields of STEM, right? And, you know, as my, as my role, my actual job as a college counselor. I can tell you without a doubt that when you're looking at fields like computer science, engineering, health, all this stuff. When colleges are looking at a student, they're not gonna be like, oh, you took three field trips to Gilead. Oh, you know someone at Gilead, like, that doesn't matter, what matters is academic preparedness and access to math. Um, and so I'm gonna say it again, you know, I really think we need to make sure that we're having access to Algebra. Algebra one at all of our schools, including the pre-K through eight. You know, I think it's just, I know I'm not a high school trustee, and this is not a high school district, and so I can't change what goes on there. But I do feel that as a pre-K through eight district, we can start supporting our students on that way. Um, if we say to them like, and get them excited about computer science and engineering, but we're not creating a pathway for them to actually get into the majors. And then therefore getting a career in that field, we're just creating meaningless aspirations. And so I think I see so much time and resource poured into awareness of STEM. And I really want us to look at systemic areas where we need to make sure that students have a pathway to Algebra one at all schools. Um, and I said this before, right, I'm not even asking for the highest level here, right? Like, if they have, say, they have access to Algebra one eighth grade and they pass each year, just take one math a year. They will hit the very minimum of calculus by twelfth grade, right? When you look at the global competition for STEM majors, a lot of these kids are finishing calculus in sophomore year. And then moving on to um, linear algebra and multi-variable calc, you know, calculus. And they're going to the community colleges to get it, you know, and so I'm not even asking for us to have an over advantage. I'm just trying to get us just to have our kids be considered and in the room. And like I said, this is just my career, this is seventeen years' worth of work, and I see it every single day with my students. That this is, it's a huge barrier, so I just wanna say this again, um, that I think we have an opportunity here. That um, I would really love for us to explore, and I'll keep bringing this up and I'll keep on being annoying about it until I kind of see movement. Movement towards getting this addressed.
And I think it's kind of hard to um, to uh, consider that at a point where we have such a. Huge demographic of underperforming students, and we are trying to get them at least to standard. Yes, we have to, uh, our job is to get our kids to standard, and yes, we should advance them. If we have the opportunity to do that, but the fact that we're not even there, it's kind of hard to expand on that. Uh, in my opinion, I think we're moving in the right direction to um, move. Toward equity-based learning and achievement in our district, and that's what we're doing. We are finally seeing the group of kids who have been, uh, whether they were miseducated, undereducated, whatever you wanna call it. They were not even meeting the standard, so we have to start. So we have to start in a place where we are providing equity across the district. And should a, a family need to expand and want to um provide a um higher learning, they are welcome to do that. But I think it's unrealistic to um expect a district who has such an underperformance to move into an area that, you know, that advanced. That's my opinion on that. Yeah. But, oh, go ahead.
I was going to ask superintendent Ochoa to maybe chime in on like, you know, I think we had some discussion about the sort of like the resource allocation question of having algebra available uh the pre K through eights. And like what um are some potential options? I, I know you um, you know, had raised the possibility of like basically getting people together to brainstorm or, or figure out some potential options. But I mean, I think I also wanted, you know, to trust you Brooks's point, like I don't want to lose, I don't, I don't want to lose sight of like with the goal, which is to ev, to educate every child, right? And so um, yes, I think, you know, in an ideal world, like we would have like math and, and, and language arts rock stars and you know, like everyone would be like meeting standards or exceeding standards, right? But like the reality is that, that we have limited resources. And so I just want to be a very, um, I want to be cognizant of that, not as like an excuse or ju, or justification, but just like we, that's like the reality, right? And so I think for a lot of kids who are really interested in algebra or like interested in math and want to accelerate, um, I'm, I'm, I know that there are some kids who do decide to transfer away from their K through A into a comprehensive middle school. So I, you know, I want to flag that that option is always available. It's, it may not be the ideal option for, you know, to leave a, a community that you've been a part of for such a long time. And I think every family and every student kind of has to make that decision for themselves, but I all, I don't at, you know, so at the same, you know, I just, I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is that I don't want us to get into a situation where like we are offering kind of like a, a buffet of options to every kid or every family and then like, but we cannot offer like everything to everyone, right? And so um, I, I want to be realistic about that, but like the algebra options are available at all of our middle schools. And they, if that is like the priority, then I think that's like, they can do that. So I don't, I hear what you're saying about access, but like there are options currently.
Yeah. And I do want to say, you know, like, I think to both of your points, right? Like, we do want to educate all students, right? And we want to make sure that we are meeting standard and we're, we're caring about all. I guess for me, what I'm, what I'm thinking about is kind of this larger picture, even beyond this is like we see the numbers of students who we're losing and the communities that we're losing. And these are parts of the equations of, of why we are losing families and we're not able to retain certain families, right? And so I think for me, I think, I honestly think all of this can coexist. Or we can support our students who are not at standard and we can support students who want to be able to advance and create those pathways. Um, I, I hear what you're saying about, you know, there are, there are opportunities within the district to, you know, to get these pathways in math. But you know, I think for me, you know, and if I'm just being honest, I, you know, when I think about North Shoreview and I think about Parkside, I'm not particularly worried about those communities, but I'm more honestly worried when it comes to Fiesta Gardens now that they're becoming a, you know, a pre K through eight. I want them to be able to have this pathway. And I think, yeah, you know, and we saw the Fiesta Gardens families come in that one time and share about like, this is our, these are our concerns, like about going to the K eight, I feel torn. I don't know what to do because I want, you know, I, I want to be able to have these opportunities for our families. And so I think it's, I, I don't know how to solve this, right? I, I think that's part of it. And I agree, there's a fiscal component. Um, and so I, but I think what's hard for me is, you know, with things that I, with everything that I know and my entire expertise, I feel that it's almost being, it's, it's almost a disservice, honestly, that we have a pre K through eight option period. And I, I know I'm going to upset all of the North Shoreview families that I, that are here with, you know, and, and on my side and my, our friends or whatever. But I think if that is the reality, I, I, you know, I almost feel like it's a crime that this is not available to families. Like that's how strongly I feel about this. And so almost the point where I almost wonder, maybe we should reevaluate or re-educate or, you know, figure out ways to make this very obvious to families. And um, because I do think not every family has the ability to have someone who understands and can advocate for them and, and point out what might be in their student's best interest.
Well, I, I mean, I, I want to point out that, you know, very respectfully to your, your education, your experience, that I think there may be a bit of like a sample bias in the, in the people that you interact with, right? Like these are people who have chosen to go to a private school. They have like a certain mentality about higher education. And like, you know, all of us are highly educated here in this room and on the call, right? Like, I, I do believe that like we want to prepare our students for the worlds that they're, they're going into. At the same time, like, I think, you know, like our basic kind of philosophy of like a rising tide lifts all boats, like we have to, we have to keep focusing on that as well. Um, because once you start to say, like, I want to accelerate like this top tier, um, I think then you, you, you're kind of like losing the plot. And so um, like this is a public school district and my focus is on giving them the basic tools that they need to get to high school and to succeed in high school. And like in high school, there's going to be a lot of opportunities to accelerate for the kids to decide themselves what's important to them and to like find those opportunities. Um, this is like an extremely, you know, this is an area with a lot of those resources. So I guess what I'm saying is like, yes, like to me, math achievement is important, but I don't want to lose sight of like the overall goal of, of public education.
The development of a whole child.
Yeah.
Thank you trustee Trin. Thank you.
Oh, I think superintendent. Your turn.
I'm waiting my turn, but I did.
patiently. Thank you.
And, and uh, I'm going to show some of my superintendent geekiness. The conversation that trustees Ho, Brooks, Trin, everyone in this call have had in the last 20 minutes are examples of the kind of thoughtful, fair, difficult, you know, highly reasoned conversations that you as a board have had year after year and continue to have. And you know, people in, in the public are going to watch this and they're going to hear everything that we said. And it just shows how much genuine interest there is and how much respect you all have with one another. We have a big advantage in that we have some extraordinary math educators. Um, and we have, uh, as you know, excellent leaders and, and our students are fantastic. Um, David Chambliss is going to work um on the development alongside Amy Burke of a group that looks specifically at our math pathways since we are, as you know, um, addressing our, our math curriculum, it's a perfect time for us to also um double back. And, and as you have asked in this meeting, I think it was trustee Proctor who said it initially, how much are we actually looking at what we do and asking whether or not we're happy with how it's working? Um, and that, that in this case has more to do with what does it mean to be a middle schooler at our K eights? And what interests do they have in, in uh pursuing uh math as an acceleration? Um, and right now the system that we have in place is not only um working, it's in, as you can tell from the data that we showed you tonight, it's doubling the number of kids who have access to algebra uh now than had access prior to the changes that we put in place. So those are, you know, data sets that are just irrefutable. It's creating more access, more kids uh who represent, you know, a really strong variety of kids throughout the district in terms of language, race, income, um, are accessing that. But it came with some compromises. In order to reach that number that we've reached, which I think is just under 400 kids taking algebra in eighth grade and the whole algebra, the whole eighth grade class is about 975. So, you know, it's pretty, getting pretty close to 40%. In order to get to that number, some kids take two periods of math in, in middle school. And so they've uh gone through a process with their folks and with the district to talk about that course and they take two math classes in the fall and two math classes in the spring. There are many kids who say, I don't want to do that. They have all the capacity, they have all the interest, they have all the readiness, but they want to take other courses. And actually our math teachers dating back to 2022 recommended a sixth grade math, seventh grade math, eighth grade math course as the base uh recommendation for kids, but as trustee Host as expressed and others too, many others. What is that opportunity for acceleration look like? And how do we do it in a way that holds firm to our equity wellness and achievement as system wide goals while also, you know, let's be creative, let's be thoughtful, let's be really efficient about how we get kids into classes. Um, and I know I'm, I'm showing my superintendent geekiness, but honestly, these conversations are really powerful. And a year from now, we're going to be sitting here talking about what we chose to do. But it will be based on listening to kids and educators and thinking about what works best um to meet their needs.
Trustee Kim, your turn.
I was going to respond to something earlier, but then five other things happened in between, so I'll try to keep track. Um, I, I do want to echo what the superintendent there said. And I think, you know, going back to that kind of conversation we were having around equity. So I think both trustee Trin and trustee Ho kind of alluded to the, you know, how test prep essentially helps tremendously in terms of understanding how questions work. And I don't talk about it often, but I used to be an overpaid SAT tutor for one of the biggest companies in the world. So when trustee Trin says she can know the answer without reading the passage, that's a hundred percent true. And I think as somebody who's worked in ed policy and equity for 20 years now, it's honestly a point of disgust and self-loathing to me. That such a thing is true. And yet I feel like it's an undeniable reality that it is in the world that we operate in. And I feel like we still have a duty to prepare our children for it. So I did want to ask, I did want to echo what trustee Trin said about not just sending home practice exams, but finding some way to incorporate it. I'm also wondering if through the annex, homework central, any of our other partners, if that in any way is a component of what they do in some way to again, help bridge that gap. And I think when trustee Brooks talked earlier about the gap that we're seeing in our district, our president Brooks, again, I, I was fixated on the gap between what our internal assessment show and what the CASA report show. And part of me wonders, at least my hypothesis is, some of that is specific to just test taking, practice, memory, muscle memory, that might help close some of that gap. Obviously, we still want to keep strengthening the underlying skills and understanding and concepts. But if we are seeing 70, 80% internally and then on test day, seeing a collapse in their performance, again, it makes it one, makes me wonder if it's specific to that style of test, that style of questioning, or even just the act of sitting through a long exam. And whether or not that's something that we can expect a lot of K through eight students to have uh any experience with. So from that point, I wanted to address that. And then to the broader conversation that trustee Ho and trustee Trin were saying, I know in my circles, these conversations are happening daily among parents. Um, I don't, you, you've heard me say this before, I reject this idea that equity and excellence are somehow antithetical. And I think that's the reason why we have achievement and wellness and equity as our three pillars. And so I appreciate what the superintendent said about trying to strike that balance about making sure we're looking for those opportunities and creating that pipeline. Because as I've said to all of you here, I credit K through 12 schools in my entire career. And if my schools had taken a stance of excellence as a second priority, I would not have gotten anywhere that I've gotten. And so while I understand when resources are constrained, a lot of us got into public education specifically because we're focused on equity. I don't want us to lose sight of building a ladder that goes as high as it needs to go and only focusing on the bottom half. And so I think that's kind of been the mentality of the district. I know that's, I think that's what superintendent was doing to earlier as well. And so I'm, I'm mindful of the fact that we have diversity of viewpoints here, but that's just something that I want to put out.
Thank you. I just want to really echo what you um trustee Trin mentioned about strategy. In our classrooms, our kids are taking a lot of tests all the time. And I think it really all boils down to strategy. Um, and incorporating different ways can enhance their ability to identify these um questions on these tests uh versus giving them more and more and more and more. It's not always more, it's strategy. So I'd like to take that into consideration. Is there anyone else that would like to?
Yes. Okay. Uh, Win, Winston, can you, Winston? Can you please check online to see if there are any public comment? Thank you.
All right. I guess that concludes our meeting. Um, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Bush to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That was a great conversation. For taking a.